Travis Tremblay.
Here.
Justice Cruzenda.
Here.
Justice Tremblay.
Thanks.
Justice Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. All right, I want to hear opportunity go into the organizational meeting. Clerk Trejer Minos, Ministerial Office Two. Trustee Garrett and Trustee Thomas Tremblay, please.
Hi, Amy Garrett, Justice here. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee April 2nd, 2012 to... It's April 2014, but I wasn't sure what day it was because I just didn't remember.
Oh, April 2014. According to the best of my memory.
I do. I, Thomas Tremblay, Justice here, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge duties of trustee or to 2013 to four 2014, according to the best of my memory.
I do. 2012.
No, to 2014, it's two-year term.
It's a two-year term.
Yeah, I know what you said. 2013 to 2014. I accept. It's okay.
All right, it works. We'll all sort it out.
All good. It's written right now. There you go.
All right.
Yours.
Really?
Yeah. Good. I mean the E and the H.
Me too.
It's a weird combo, the G to the A to the H, and I dropped the E a lot and then saw it spunked up.
Well, I just want to say thank you both for running. It's very important, I think, we keep the direction that this village is going in and you two have been integral parts of keeping it going and I think, I think we all feel the right direction here.
Thank you.
We've made a, we've made a big difference in our six or seven years. I hope that it will continue and I'm glad that you're aboard.
Thank you. I think it's going to continue further.
Okay. David Marshall be hereby appointed Village Attorney for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the retainers set by annual budget appropriation. Donna Barcom be and is hereby appointed Deputy Clerk, Village of Champlain for the term of one year expiring on April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Larry Sorrell be and is hereby appointed Superintendent of Public Works for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Tatro Jr. be and is hereby appointed Fire Building Codes zoning enforcement officer for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Juanita Minos be and is hereby appointed Records Access Manager for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at no salary. Juanita Minos be and is hereby appointed Clerk Trejer for the term of two years expiring April 7th, 2014 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Donna Barcom be and is hereby appointed Register of Vital Statistics for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. H, the Planning Board, uh, Planning Board Appointment, I have, I have a person in mind, I'm talking to him, I would like to wait until the next meeting to appoint him. Any motion to accept?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
Second motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The following appointments were offered by myself, Deputy Mayor Amy, Amy Garrett, Water and Sewer Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner, Thomas Tremblay, Thomas Cruzenda. I'm asking the Water and Sewer Commissioners and Deputy Commissioner to develop a plan for Prospect Street so that we can address the water issues there. Larry has a lot of information for you, I'm sure you've already checked with him, but we'd like to, obviously, we'd like to get something in the works here so we can get Village Attorney working towards a local law for that. Street Commissioner Kim, Deputy Commissioner Tom Cruzenda, Equipment Tool Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Tom Cruzenda, Building Property Commissioner Kim Tremblay, Deputy Commissioner Amy Garrett, Parks Recreation Commissioner Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Thomas Tremblay, Personnel Commissioner Amy Garrett, Deputy Commissioner Tom Cruzenda. I would like to, if it is okay with the Board, I would like to table approval for the personnel, the personnel document for further review and discussion. I'd like us to keep in mind, all of us, we'll have a special meeting here within the next couple of weeks, I would like to have this approved by the May meeting. Keep in mind that we are a village, we represent the village people. A village without rules and laws are not going to last very long and we, we need to look very closely, but I'm asking that you keep in mind who we represent and how we are going to deal with these personnel decisions. And there are some changes, I think, that, that need to be made, so I would like to table this for at least a month, if not longer, so that we can, we can iron out any discussion that we have in regards to the personnel issue. Arrestment Committee Member, Tom Cruzenda and Kim Tremblay. Shared Services, Tom Tremblay, Tom Cruzenda. Insurance Commissioner, Amy Garrett. Planning Board Liaison, Tom Tremblay. Zoning Board Liaison, Kim Tremblay. Champlain Fire District Liaison, Tom Cruzenda. Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Clark Curtick. Vice Chairperson, no appointment at this time. Chairperson, Chairperson for the Planning Board, Janet McFetrich, no appointment at this time for Vice Chairperson. Budget Officer will be myself, the Mayor, Recreation Committee, Amy Garrett, Tom Champlain IDA member, myself and Tom Tremblay. Any motion to accept?
Mm-hmm.
I give you a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Following the Board of Appeals, be and hereby, are hereby made Marie Dupie and Claire Clark be and hereby appointed Inspectors of Election for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation with Marie Dupie as Chairperson. Richard Fillion be and is hereby appointed Village Historian for the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at no salary. Michelle Brennan be and is hereby appointed Village of Champlain Recreation Leader for the term of one year.
Michelle or Michelle?
Michelle.
Michelle what?
Brennan.
Brennan, G-R-E-N-O-N. For the term of one year expiring April 1st, 2013 at the salary set by budget, annual budget appropriation. Clark Curtick be and is hereby appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term of five years expiring April 3rd, 2017 at no salary. Need a motion to accept?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board designation?
I can read the board. You don't have to read it.
I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll do A.
I'm retired for you, not used to talking so long.
I'll do A, you do B, okay? At the second Monday night of each month, be and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Village Board during the year April 2nd, 2012 through April 1st, 2013. At the time, be at 6:30 PM at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies, copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting days be posted in one conspicuous place of the village as required by law. All members voted. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your honor.
At the second Wednesday night of each month, be and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Zoning Board of Appeals during the year April 2nd, 2012 through April 1st, 2013. And the time be at 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as requested by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meetings be posted in one conspicuous place in the village.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Carried that TV Bank, Chasey Bank, Chasey Branch Office, Key Bank of New York, N.A., Champlain Branch Office, Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York, Key Trust Company, Albany, New York, USDA Rule of Development, Defica, New York, and Champlain National Bank, Champlain Branch Office be and are hereby designated the official bank positors of village funds during the year 2002, 2012 through April 1st, 2013.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Whereas, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular Board meeting of audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore, be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular Board meeting for audit and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your turn.
Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Trustees will approve reimbursement of such officers and employees at a rate of 50 cents per mile. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That the Press Republican, Plasberg, New York be and is hereby designated the official newspaper of the Village of Champlain during the year April 2nd, 2012 through April 1st, 2013. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That the Press Republican, Plasberg, New York be and is hereby designated the official newspaper of the Village of Champlain during the year April 2nd, 2012 through April 1st, 2013. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That the village continue its participation in with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Commission and with the County of Clinton Comprehensive Youth Program as a member of said countywide youth organization.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And carried that the organization, the annual organizational meeting for organizing the Board for the year 2013, 2014, official year, and for the various appointments and committees be as hereby scheduled for April 1st, 2013 at 6:30 at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York.
Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board next reviewed the investment policy, procurement policy, chemistry union contract. I'm going to skip over the personnel policy for the time being and rules and procedures for public meetings, and they are accepted as, all accepted as submitted. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's one more thing that you were copying with Planning Board meetings, but I forgot to put it on this sheet because I had done this before, so we could act on that along with this. Should be toward the back of the packet.
Planning Board meeting date set, the third, the third Wednesday night of each month, be and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Village of Champlain Planning Board during the year April 2nd, 2012 through April 1st, 2013, and at the time be at 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York. Have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have to adjourn this?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to approve adjournment here for the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
That there be no further business to come before this meeting, since was learned at 6:48. All Board members voted, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, organizational meeting. Thank you, folks. All right. We have 10 minutes before the public hearing on the budget, so let's, if we could, let's start, do as much as we can before 7:00 and then we'll stop for the budget. Need a motion to approve the minutes for the Board meeting, March 12th? Need a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes, any additions, additions?
Yeah. Hold on. Yeah. Is this the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, no, nothing in the regular meeting.
No, yes?
No, thank you.
Approval of the March 12th meetings, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept the budget workshop minutes, March 19th, 2012.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Uh, yeah, just one correction. Grammatical error, but we won't worry about that. In my, when we were talking about passing the budget and we just left out the beginning of it, that, you know, even though there were a couple areas I was not in support of, I overall was in support of the entire budget because it was a good budget, so.
Okay, what changes would you like to, or is there any?
Just that first part of the sentence of that, that's all that was in there.
Where are we?
I don't know, I don't have, I'm trying to find it here.
She said there were a couple of areas that, that you were not in favor of.
Right, well, that's 12. Yes.
Uh, Trustee Garrett said it was phenomenal budget and expressed her appreciation.
And then I said that it's, overall, it's a phenomenal budget, though, and approve of it. So, that's all.
Okay. Do you have those on?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's good.
Do you have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor accepting the minutes, March 19th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's named, wasn't here.
One extension? Any opposed? Budget carries or the minutes approval carries?
This is a little more flexible. Is that the latter one here? Oh, no, it was in the other budget, just he versus his.
Okay. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices, general question period for members of the community.
Special warning.
Okay. We still have a few minutes. Mr. Tatro was at a zoning meeting in Ross's Point. We'll have to get him to write out his reports.
Well, Mr. Larry. Mr. Tatro came into my office today and he just wanted to put out there to let the public know that there is no Vernon in the Village of Champlain at all, and there is a statewide ban on Vernon until May 16th in Clinton County.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, good.
He also has sent a letter to
Oh, Sam, Sam Behr.
Mr. Behr, which didn't get on his correspondence because I believe I got it after the
I think we were copied with it.
You were copying, it just wasn't on his correspondence, so just wanted to make, bring that to your attention.
Okay. All right. I'll do my report. The lighting project at the Village Office in Grearch has been completed. I noticed that it's much brighter in here and should reduce our electrical charges. Spring pickup dates for bag leaves and branches will be April 12th and 13th and the 26th and Please put your bag leaves and small branches in clear plastic bags. If you do it early, before the 12th and 13th or the 26th and 27th, the DPW crew will be around on a daily basis to pick up those bags before they get wet and become too heavy. Also, those of you that are cleaning up your yards and doing some raking, please put your piles of sand by the side of the road and the DPW crew will pick them up on a regular basis rather than having them spread out all over the, all over the roadway. We'll do that on a daily basis as weather permits. We'd like to keep the village clean and pick up as, as quickly as possible. I'd like to thank the Northeastern Clinton Central School Student Council and their advisor, Janet McFetrich, for cleaning up the riverbank here in the village. The commitment and help these group, these groups offer is always appreciated by the village. Thank you very much. I would like to thank village residents for exercising their right to vote on March 20th. There was an impressive turnout of voters that shows interest in the village affairs, and I would also like to thank Mr. Kevin Triller and Mr. Bruce Leclerc for their interest in the village by running for elective office. It is, I think it's great that people are getting involved and seeing the village move forward. Though you're all disappointed, but that's the length of my, my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jim?
Uh, just two quick things. Again, I want to echo the congratulations to Amy and Tom on their reelections. It was a very good turnout for the voters. You know, usually elections are kind of, kind of small, so it was nice to see so many residents get out and vote. Again, congratulations, Amy and Tom. And to the DPW, glad to see that they're using the new fork that was purchased. I've seen some areas where it's been used and it looks really, really nice. And I do see that a lot of the village residents are getting out and already enjoying the nice weather with some cleanup activities, so I think the sooner that we can get out there and, and pick it up before the April showers come, the better. Other than that, you know, the village is starting to clean up, it is spring. That's it.
Well, as Kim is, is Road Commissioner, I hope that you will work with Larry. Larry's been very busy on the Church Street project, so he's got a couple bids for the
For the milling and
For the milling. You know, so if we can stay in contact with the powers that be, becoming, as soon as we can get that paved and taken care of.
Yes.
I think it's an awful, it's an awful shape right now.
Oh, yeah, it is.
And I thank, I thank the residents for their patience on this.
I do think it's better, though, that we, we've kind of held off to do it all in one shot.
Get it all.
I, I think it'll be better for the residents in the long run.
It has slowed down the speeding though on Church Street.
It has, it has.
Big time. And the only problem with paving is you do get going.
Downstreet became a speed lane.
I know.
Slow the speed limits.
The powers that be that will remain anonymous need to slow down on the village streets. There's some government entities, if I may, that need to maintain the posted speed limits for the village. Trustee Cruzenda?
No new items to report this month, but I just would like to congratulate Amy and Tom on the successful elections and great that they'll be on board for another two years. Thank you.
Thanks. Trustee Tremblay?
Not a lot to report. First off, I'd like to thank the voters for, for the wonderful turnout and for their support. And now that I appreciate the support, I echo what Kim said, it's nice to see that many voters get out and have that kind of numbers. Other than that, I attended an IDA meeting this, last week, with you, Greg, and just the approval of the annual audit, no new business really. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Trustee Garrett?
I'm short-winded tonight, too.
No.
I am. Nothing's really happening in April as far as activities. Obviously, May will pick up with community things happening with the kick up of the bazaar. So I really, I have absolutely nothing today. Coming to new business, I have some things to add, but you know, other than that, no.
Well, if I may add.
And thank you for the support, too. I do appreciate it.
I think I've asked for your help, I'm going to ask again for your help with this playground issue.
Okay.
I'm getting a lot of community response from residents that are, that are waiting, that are willing to come out and help us raise money and help us handle the planning, plus Larry's getting ready to do some groundwork down here for whatever we need for our black topping season there so we can get that 40 by 60 plot down there fixed. As soon as the weather breaks a little bit, we'll get started on the community garden again, make it bigger this year. There's been residents that have shown interest in that.
Are we having people sign up now to start reserving spots?
They can, if they want to, if they want to sign up now.
Yeah, we real
Call the Village Office, 298-4152.
It'll give us an idea how big we need to go.
Let us know your interest.
Because I know a lot of people who didn't do it are like, yeah, I want to try it this year.
Well, I think we have the room to make it significantly larger, so.
Isn't it great?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it will be. I have posted seven, let's suspend the regular meeting. Do we need a motion to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Need a motion to suspend the regular meeting? Go to the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Need a motion to open up the budget hearing for the 2012, 2013 budget?
So moved.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You have the budget that we, that we talked about at the budget hearing, the special meeting. If I could just go back over some of the high points. The tax rate goes from 444 per thousand to $4.20, a 24 cent decrease in our tax rate. There will be no increase in the water and wastewater rates again this year for the second year in a row. We were able to do this because we effectively paid off our debts, or some debts, paid off the loader, the snowplow, early. We are in the process of purchasing material and chemicals in advance with this year's budget to save ourselves some money in next year's budget. I think we can all, I think we can all say that the prices will increase for fuel and, you know, stuff like that for next year, so what we can buy this year, as we have in the past couple, three years here, what we can buy this year, I think will be significantly cheaper if we get it now. A good example of that is we contracted to purchase a certain amount of salt, and Larry, you could probably explain this better than I.
You'll have to put in your bid to the county what you want per tonnage. The max I could get was 72 tons. I ordered 60. They brought me two loads and it was a little over 50 ton. Well, I'm obligated to take the other nine ton. So with salt being the rate it is right now and it's going to go up, I ordered another truckload. So we're going to have 25 ton delivered this week and we're going to save probably $10, $15 a ton, so.
$15 a ton, so. Because they wouldn't just deliver the eight, right, ton and I was obligated to buy it, so.
Well, but purchasing like this, I mean, it does save us money.
Correct.
And that salt in that shed is good. I mean, we're not putting it in the sand pile anymore. It's not leaching out into the environment, so it's, I still feel, and I've said this many times, that that salt shed is paid for itself, you know, over and over and over. So that was a good purchase on our part. Any other discussion on the budget? Need a motion to approve the budget for the 2012-2013 budget year? Have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please, if there's no other discussion.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Budget is passed. Make a motion to go out of the public hearing?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to go back into the regular meeting?
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll have the report from the Department of Treasury, please.
Everyone's been copied with the March expense and revenue reports. We also had a water and sewer billing. Water is 52,012 dollars and 48 cents. And sewer is 86,583,61.
Bills are due by the end of the month, please. All right.
Oh, yes. You should make that announcement, actually.
But they should be made by the
Because if not, they're going back to the county for re-levee.
That's right, this is the time that the bills and prior bills must be paid by the end of this month, where they go to the county to be re-levee on your taxes, which will come up on June 1st. So it's important that you pay these bills now so as not to get hit with a higher tax rate on June 1st.
We also need to make a transfer.
Do we have to go through the others first or just go down to the fund transfer?
Purchase requisitions and purchase requests.
No, let's do it. I need to do the purchase requisitions first. You have one for Liam J. Minard flushing of the two water wells. Per our discussions, I think we, I know we've discussed, I think we all agree that we would kind of go with the flushings one year and then the next year flush out the water tank. Gives us a better product, cuts down on some of the stuff that makes it into the water system. I think this is a reasonable cost, 2,200 per well. It really made a difference last time. And then the next year, the DPW crew has received the confined space training and we will do the, we will do the tank cleaning ourselves rather than, rather than pay someone else to do that. So we don't have the expertise, you know, to do the well flushing, am I right?
Correct.
So we've got to put this out. I'd like approval so that we can get it done on this budget year rather than waiting until next budget year.
Can his price stay the same for two years at all?
Yeah. Need a motion to approve this purchase requisition, Liam J. Minard, $6,900 to flush the two water wells? Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
Oh, we need three written quotes, we can't pass this out.
Is he the only one that does it here?
I don't know anybody else that does it.
Well, how do we get around that, though? I mean, with our requirement of having three.
I was thinking of that, but I thought he was the only one as well.
Then you see if there's
Probably somebody in Albany there does it or something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's just someone who's not going to come here, I know, just so we have the written quotes.
Quote each twelve separately.
You know, with all these audits in these little villages and we're doing so well, we want to keep it that way.
It would be only three written for 20 or 21, you'd need two verbals.
Well.
Really doesn't work that way.
It's cheating, trying.
Why don't we write here?
Why don't?
Well, get a couple, get some, we can get some, we can call and get some verbals.
And I'll get you the quote, so if I get a quote cheaper, we'll do it, do what you want. We can do it next month.
Let's table this then.
Maybe we can approve 69, not to exceed $6,900 based on the other two quotes coming in, but we really should have the two attached.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so.
So I make a motion to re-change the motion?
Yep, sure can.
To approve the maximum spending of $6,900 for the flushing of three wells in anticipation of two further written quotes to come in.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. Larry, will you, because he's done this for us in the past?
Correct.
And I'm, he's probably assuming that he's going to be doing it again. Would it be appropriate that we just let him know that we need two other verbal quotes?
I will.
Just so that, you know, just tell him it's our protocol that we need to do it, that way? He's not hanging there waiting?
No, no.
Do you have any idea when he planned to do this? Could he give you any indication?
Well, I had wanted to flush it before I flushed the system.
Yeah, okay.
So it'd be the end of the month or first part of May. I'd like to flush it first week of May.
See what he's saying before that? So we push this stuff?
Yes, so.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Because it doesn't pay to flush your hydrants now to go back and flush your wells, because, you know.
Right. Do you think you can get quotes that quickly?
Yes.
So fax us, fax us quotes, so we can, we can, okay. Need a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Have a purchase requisition, purchase a camera security system, 36296. This is a system for security, especially here in the office. Situate one here in this office, put one in the copying room, put one in the back of the garage, and then one that focuses outside the garage on the gas pumps. This is a workable system, I think the price is fair. One of our employees has a system like this and reports that it is, it's an excellent system for, you know, the motion detector type thing. You have a second quote on the, on the back of that page with a price of, with a price of $593, I think it is. Okay.
Plus ship.
Yeah, plus shipping. We can pick this up, if approved, we can pick this up tomorrow or this next winter, whatever, and get it here. Where is this fund land?
This is, this is off, it's through Amazon, but it's free shipping.
Do we have to sell this ourselves?
Yes, we'll put it up ourselves. We have an issue, I've asked the, I've asked the guys in DPW to keep that back door closed. You know, people walk in and out of here. I'm afraid, you know, from a safety standpoint, from losing equipment standpoint, I mean, you never know who's going to walk in that back door. The front door is always open. I think a little security here would go a long ways in protecting our staff. Need a motion to approve?
So moved?
Need a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
How does this work? Is it going into a computer? Is it a DVD? How often does it have to get changed?
It goes, it goes into a box, into a DVD box?
Uh huh.
That's set up. And you can set this for 24 hours, but you can set it just so it doesn't run steady. If there's motion on the camera, they'll record that motion.
Oh, I see. So it'll only hold up for a 24-hour amount of movement?
No.
Yeah, it will continue.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so does it, does it rate it to a high drive?
It rates it to a high drive.
Okay, so there's no room for tampering or anything like that?
And it's all time stamping?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have to get a, a flash, a television screen or a television panel.
Yeah, just a small flash screen, because that's where it comes on.
So you can monitor?
Yeah.
If it'll be a four-screen?
I can watch, I can watch all four screens, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Need a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. The final requisition is for a pressure washer, hot water pressure washer to maintain our equipment. I'm surprised that we haven't purchased one of these prior to this. I think a valuable piece of equipment that we can, that we need to maintain our equipment. Also, we could use it to wash the building or whatever we need to do here. There are two quotes here. One for 3499 and one for 2646 with a four-year warranty added, 229, 330, a total of 297597.
Is this one, oh, wait, I asked, sorry. Just on this one?
In the water tank, too.
Yeah.
This one here only requires a verbal quote?
Yep, I see that.
On top of algebra.
Well, you have two bits, that's good.
Motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this purchase?
Yeah, the one that we are approving, it doesn't say hot water on that one. So the one on the back says hot water. I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, the one on the front.
Where does it say hot water here?
Gasoline engine-powered hot water pressure washers.
Oh, there's the hot.
Right, right on the bottom, right there.
It's a little small for me. I see now. Okay, yeah, because I think that would make a difference.
I'll take the other one, if you want, get the other one.
No, I just, I think the hot water is a better option.
The other one has a Honda engine.
Yeah. Well, you have to look at that, too.
That's, that's the difference. If the other one has a better engine, a Honda.
What kind of warranty does that come with?
Two-year limited warranty.
So we've got a four-year on this, so we're really
Yeah, we're paying for the four-year, yeah. Any Honda's electric start, this one's not.
So you got to pull the cord.
Yeah. Something better than nothing.
Well, it's minimal indifference. I mean, you know, once I have a discussion here, I mean, if we're, we're talking a difference of $500, is there really, is this a better piece of equipment that's going to last us longer? I mean, it's something to think about here. I mean, is there that big of a difference in it or not? I mean, are we talking apples to oranges here or, you know?
Well, I think for the amount of use that it would be getting, I think we would be just as well off with the less expensive one.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to use it to clean the equipment, we're going to use it to, you know, things.
Clean the water tank?
Yeah.
I don't offer often to spend more.
Oh, no, no, I, no.
You know, if it is that superior of a piece of equipment, you know, sometimes you do shoot yourself in the foot trying to save money.
Yeah.
If you're buying a lesser quality. The beauty is having this four-year warranty, is the warranty on everything, no matter what. Usually that's how these are, that you buy these extra things. Is this a Lowe's? Who is this from?
I think this is Lowe's, yeah.
This is Plesberg Minar?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Lowe's.
They stay behind you.
Yeah.
Right.
Try to keep your business local, too.
Right, all right. I'll do that.
Where was the other one from, Larry?
At 2 Northern Hydrolite.
Okay.
3,000.
It's a thought. Okay, sound good.
This one's in 3,000, I guess I, as well. Any other discussion on this purchase? Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Need a motion to approve the warrant?
We need to do a transfer.
Okay. Let's see, fund transfer from F599 Fund Balance to F9710.6 Serial Bonds. We have discussed this paying down the principal on this, on this bond as quickly as we possibly can. This 25,000 will be applied to the principal and, you know, so that we can, this is a 20, 2027? This is a 2027 end, you know, for this loan. So if we can pay, as we've talked about in the past, if we can pay an extra principal payment a year, we can knock that date down significantly over, you know, over the next eight or 10 years. I think that would be a wise move for us to pursue.
I agree.
So I need a motion to expend these funds?
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this fund transfer? Our fund balance is healthy, so we can, we can manage this one real well.
We don't need to make the payment with a full payment that our bond is like, one's 22,000, one's 3,000, if for some reason it's one year, we can't do that.
Right.
We don't have to.
We can make whatever.
Exactly.
I see. I see, let's put them out.
Well, yeah.
We can continue, that'd be great.
It's unfortunate, but the principal payment right now and the interest payment are almost the same.
That's all it's time, it's hard to imagine.
Any other discussion on this fund transfer? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
I'm posting here, yeah.
Go ahead.
Is it possible, I believe the reason why we're still paying so much interest in the rate was high that day?
Yeah.
Is that something that can be refinanced in any way?
Well, yeah, but it can, it can. I just haven't, can't refinance with USDA, but we can go out and, and refinance. It's 5.78 with the interest rate back then.
With the interest now, but isn't there, we have to go through the bond thing again?
Have to go through the bond council.
The bond council and all the other, all the other expenses associated with it.
I can find out, between the two, the amount is 400,000.
You don't know?
So I don't know. No.
I guess the thing we could talk about is if all the other
Closing costs on the financing of your house.
Cost of only a 1%.
Because bond council charges on the amount.
Exactly. I'll take a look at it, you know, right now, rates are so beautiful for everything, then you drop our, you know, we pay it off faster.
Anything else? Have a roll call, please, maybe?
They already did, and then they were discussing.
I'm gonna ask you a question, Gary.
They already won on here. Why are we voting on here?
So we have a roll call vote.
We did, we did it. We did, and then Tom asked about the interest.
Moving right along, Jen. No, thank you. Closer to adjourned now. I told you. Okay, now we'll have the presentation of warrant payment.
Okay, we have additional invoices to be added. We got our, just our light bills and telephone bills.
Which is this 111 that's at the waste?
Yes, that's the waste bucket.
We'll do those three lines.
Cause our media is one we have.
Pumping out the water.
So the additional invoices are $5,775.50.
You know, can we benefit, sidebar, looking into any kind of solar kind of energy for down at that wastewater plant and, you know, for any of the other stuff? Would we benefit by looking at some alternative sources we use so much electricity?
I think our biggest part is the pumps.
Right.
The blowers.
Is there?
I don't think solar energy would maintain those pumps.
No.
Now they use so much. It may be, you know, maybe something to consider, putting them on the ropes here and doing something with these. Even if you put them on, I mean, it's gonna be generating some electricity that I think would slow down the meter down there a little bit.
Get our own windmill down there? Make exception?
What about the?
Can you imagine the permitting?
The savings engine?
Ah, big bill.
The blowers? It's $207,000 and payback would be 76.4 years.
Well, I'll be dead by that point, so.
We had some grant money.
I didn't realize it.
I think that would be.
I know.
If we could get them at a lesser price or, you know, through grants or something, I think that would be.
Well, and I wonder with all the energy-efficient grants that are out there, is there a grant to be able to redo something like that if there's gonna be a reduction?
Well, we were told by the owner of the company that he would help us sign grant funding. I mean, I don't know what the lifetime of those, what the lifetime of those motors are down at that plant now, but they must be, what, 30?
Well, they were put in 1996.
96. That's 14, 16, 16 years, 26 years.
And just the big motors down below, when they put them in, they were $40,000 pieces, the pumps themselves.
16 years. Because if we have to turn around and replace those, it's gonna be some big bucks.
Yeah, big bucks. Don't worry.
Big bucks.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you, you guys have a chance to look, see if there's any grants out there. Or have this guy look. Might as well look if he's willing to look.
Well, we're trying to convince him that he could use us as a showplace.
Exactly.
I tried to fool him. He'll be down at that conference on.
Oh, good.
Next one.
We're done.
This one, so. Give me a cut of hair.
Which one you want? Go platinum or whatever.
Okay, any other discussion on the warrant?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. The Howard Becker.
That's our.
Is that the one? Rate thing?
Check writer.
Oh, check writer?
Paymaster machine.
Paymaster machine. Can't you write your own checks? $437?
That's, they're short. Yeah, the checks are shorter.
Okay. Row 11 Truck and Equipment. Blades, blade, covers, bolts, that's $2,000.
That's for the carbide blades.
Oh, for the plow again?
With the stone plow, yes.
Okay.
I bought those ahead.
Yep. Oh, so West York, that answered that, barrels. We had a couple of gas. What were we filling two things with the gas? We had a 60285 to Smith &amp; Sons and 24076.
One goes to the fire department.
84361. Which one is which? There's one fire department and one.
The street is, 851 10.1 is the garage. The 3410 is the fire department.
And what period of time is this over?
For a month. Probably not quite a month, cause we give it a little bit early.
So why so much gas we haven't been plowing? 60285.
All the plows are on diesel.
Yeah, the.
60285.
Piles on diesel.
And what is this gas that we're talking here? Coming from Smith &amp; Sons, what kind of gasoline? That's what you said, how long is this a period for? You said one month.
Oh, that was for the, for the billing for the fire department. Yeah, I'm not sure how long that bill was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they had it on every month.
5110 is fire department? I thought you said that's the, here.
That's the street. The one on the bottom of the other period.
All right, and what are we using regular, that's my question. What are we using regular gasoline for right now?
Sewer jet and pickup, the van, pickup and the van.
Maybe install the doors or something?
Well, our pumps and stuff.
So it's not just a month, okay.
No.
Jump in, Michael. You drinking it? Okay. And what ladder did we get at Ace Hardware for $455?
That's a ladder to get into water. That would cool to the last, to get into the water tank.
Okay. I didn't realize that was coming from Ace.
400. 400.
404S, 300 pound.
That was the best price.
That's it.
We're gonna have to keep it. We're trying to keep as much, as much local as we can here.
No, I agree. I just, I didn't realize we were getting that ladder from Ace. So I was like, what ladder do we need at that price? That's all. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the warrant?
No, I don't, go on the motion, David.
No.
Okay, so I make a motion to finish the warrant. With the additional invoices totaling $5,775.15.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Gisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett. Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Can you report from the superintendent, please?
He's all have a copy of my work report. And I had on my agenda for lien for the wells. I will get the other quote for that. And I plan on flushing first week of May. I have quotes on the, on the millings. There's, I have two quotes because I gotta pay to have the equipment hauled up here, Albany. And it's for an eight-hour day. It was $4,000 plus a thousand to haul it. And we're gonna use our trucks to haul the stuff away and sweep whatever. If it takes work, it takes longer eight hours, then it's $3,000 for the next day. But if it takes three hours, I'll keep my guys, the overtime, and they'll stay for that same price for that day. So.
So you're gonna keep them here.
Yeah.
So if it takes an additional three hours, that?
Three hours, they'll, they'll do it that day. If they can do it all in that day, they'll stay the extra. I'll just keep my guys, but if they have to stay.
And there's no extra charge in that?
It's $3,000, for five hours, it's $3,000 for the next day.
Okay.
We started sweeping, got quite a bit of sand off the streets already, getting the heavy stuff off. People have bags out there. I'll put them out, we'll pick them up. And. And I'd like to thank you for the article in the paper. The job wouldn't get done the way it is if it wasn't a team effort, so I'd like to thank my guys and the office help for it. So, thank you. I got the load of salt coming and I'm working right now. I went down to the county and talked to the county and they're gonna get ahold of me on when they're available. The tar, I'm gonna set up with the milling guy. And I also have the hopes in for line striping Oak Street and Ture Street when it's done. And hopefully we'll have enough we can, round the back of Kimpek Building's gonna have to, we got trucks on back there. There's a lot of holes.
I was just gonna ask you, as you're going around cleaning, are you gonna be making notes of all the? There's some pretty good holes out there this year. I don't know why, but wow.
That's why we usually take our torch, get the hole nice and dry for the stuff, because if it's wet underneath, it's not gonna stay.
Right, well, we're starting to dry out finally. Starting.
No burn. Yeah, so there's no burning in the village.
It's a black truck, but it doesn't come.
We saw the big fire out west, people just burning off dead grass and wiped out how many homes? Killed how many people? Eight people dead? It's nothing to mess with.
Any other questions for that? Talk to the correspondence, please.
Correspondence from John P. Trelawney regarding personnel complaint. Correspondence from Janet Petrich regarding World Water Day and River Bank cleanup. Letters to Clinton County Highway Department regarding road striping. Copy of the perma paywall audit.
Give me a copy of Mr. K. Joe's letter to Mr. K. here. That's correspondence as well, probably number five. Just added to your list. Okay. Full business, nothing with the water district so far. We have a meeting with the engineers on Thursday at 6 o'clock in the town office to discuss their plan on forming a water district on the East and West Service Road. We'll see what that, what becomes of that. New business? Anyone have new business here?
Yes. We said that we'd bring it back up again in the spring about pickup and changing our one-inch policy. Hopefully going back to being able to pick up a little bit more brush, maybe with some limitations so we don't get, you know, what happened the year that we end up getting rid of it with people taking down every tree in their yard and, you know, having 20 feet high, you know, piles to pick up was excessive. But, you know, I am noticing, I don't know if anyone else is, especially, you know, now the leaves and everything down and snow gone. People's backyards are, in little back areas are getting piled with stuff because it's way too hard putting them in plastic bags. It's quite crazy. I don't know if any of you have tried it. I tried, I quit after one try.
Well.
But a lot of people are asking for it. They're asking that we can go back, at least get a little bit more things picked up. Is there, you know, a way that we can revisit this situation?
Well, I made a call to Sharp Rennell today. The chipper is $150 per day.
Okay.
We don't have, we don't have a truck to cover, you know what I mean?
Right.
To cover the bed that we could, you know, blow the chipping stuff in there. I think that would be one, we may be able to solve that problem. The second issue is we have to have some, I think we have to have some, some guarantee if we kill. I know it's difficult, that we could say to the residents on April 15, we're going to do Elm Street, Oak Street, Prospect Street. The next day, we're gonna do next part of the street. If we're going to do this, we can't have the crew run, I mean, like, when they, when they pick up the leaves, they go all over the place.
Right, right, right.
When you have that chipper and you have a truck, we wanna be able to do each street, clean it up and not have to go back.
Well, I think what we did in the past is they would say pickup is going to be between this and that, but you must have it out on the first day. And as they move through the village, it's not gonna go back and go. So once they hit the street, it's no going back.
Yeah.
Because if you limit it to, you know, say Oak, Elm and Chestnut, and they didn't happen to do their cleanup in time, then we've got that rented piece of equipment and then we've got downtime because we didn't tell the next street that they're gonna go. I'd rather see us say, you know, you have to have it out by 7:00 AM like you've always done.
Yes, and correct. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna designate certain days to certain streets, we can't have one individual putting seven truckloads of stuff out there. So it takes us all day doing seven truckloads.
Exactly.
And we can't take care of the rest of the customers.
Right.
So there has, yes, we could probably do something, but there has to be a limit.
Exactly, I agree.
Well, there's still, still the possibility exists that the residents themselves, if they have the opportunity, ability, equipment, that they can trailer their own stuff down to the Elm Street drive-by.
I've had, I've had a lot, I had a guy, had some trees down over here brushed. I opened up the gate for him, you know? Just put it at the top of the hill, we'll take care of it. There's, there's no plastic bags and there's no building materials and no garbage.
No metal.
That's correct. It's just branches and leaves only.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know how, and Larry, you know, obviously give us your suggestions here. How do we limit it? I mean, because what happened here on Main Street was absolutely absurd. It was just, you know, a lifetime supply of trees were stacked there. So it killed it for everybody, you know, so.
Well, we, we need to.
Limitations, but there's a lot of trees down right now. There's a lot of branches, there's a lot of mess.
But I mean, if people have a lot of trees down in their backyard, yes, some branches, some fine branches, that's fine. But it's not up to the village school, clean everybody's backyard up with four, five, six inches of tree.
Right.
I mean, you know, we spent all, all one day.
You know, branches, you know, that kind of stuff that's down.
Well, we can stipulate that the stuff that can go in the bags.
If it's loose stuff, yeah.
The loose stuff, the smaller branches like we have in the past, put those in the clear bags. The stuff that's larger than an inch, and I think that was our limit, was one inch. The stuff that's larger than an inch, trim it off. You know, put your leaves and your small branches and stuff in a clear plastic bag and just leave the branch itself by the side of the road. And as we come through with the chipper, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna chip everything there. It wouldn't make any sense to me, it wouldn't make any sense to chip the leaves and the small branches. We can throw those in the back of the truck and haul them down to our spot down here.
But then are you having to empty them all out of the bags?
Yes, they have to be.
Yeah, so it isn't easier just to pick it up?
No.
It isn't, yeah.
You know, get community service people.
So if you put a limit, you wanna put a limit on the size and maybe a limit on the size of pile?
You have to, because.
Like now bigger than a truck?
I've had residents that had 20, 22-foot trees that we had to come back with the chainsaw and cut them in half because they didn't stay on the truck.
Yeah, I know, I believe that.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, we really should say no whole trees. I mean, we're not here to have you cut down a tree, you hire someone to do that. I'm talking, and you can get a significant amount of branches after winter, you know?
Correct.
But that's what we're talking, a reasonable, you know, clean up the debris in the yard, but no entire trees. You know, you can't decide to cut down a tree.
If somebody has like a small pickup load out there or something, you know, that's, that's different. But when somebody's got three, four truckloads.
So limit it that way?
Yeah.
The size of a small pickup?
Yeah.
Be your limit.
Well, there's also the possibility, Larry and I were discussing this before the meeting. There are people in the area that have chipper's and have trucks that made subcontract.
Yeah.
You know, come in and, I mean, we're talking, I don't know how many hours for the DPW crew plus, you know, if it's 150 a day for three days, that's, that's $150. If someone will come in for 600 or 700 or even $800.
Right, cut the labor out then.
That cuts our labor out. You know, and they'll come in with the chipper, with the truck, they'll clean up the, you know, the debris that's left and haul it away.
Well, we're gonna call a cops and see what the.
There are people here in the area that, you know.